Another Zoom meeting and we when I get started in a minute, if anybody has any questions about the Zoom meeting, right now, we have it set up where there is no chat. And participants, when we do get to that point where you want to speak, please raise your blue hand under, if you click on participants and you're floating or pop up Zoom control window, which would be at the top of the bottom, depending on how your screen setup, and click on participants. And you can go ahead and raise your hand next to your name. But please keep yourself on mute unless you're speaking. I don't want to have to mute everybody. Then let people unmute. Matt, you are the co-host in case something happens with connection. And hi Susan, how are you? Looks like everybody's coming in. Okay. Crazy dad just made it home in time from Boston. It was crazy, crazy. So let's look at this meeting going. So I'd like to call the Wakefield Planning Board Meeting on November 17th, 2020 to order. And let's do a quick roll call just to make sure everybody's here. Matt Lowry.
Here.
Thank you. Bill Diamori. Hello. Megan Massali.
Here.
Hi. Joanne Schooler.
Here.
Oh, hi. We have a planning board of five. This is wonderful. And Susan All, see you there, our clerk. Thank you. So as we get going, I'll pull up the agenda and quickly go over. I'm going to share my screen to our planning board website, which we've done some updates this week. Or we haven't. Jennifer McDonald did some updates, which is great. If you don't know, here on the left side of the meeting videos, if you click on the meeting videos, you'll get the latest, but up in the top right, the little burger. If you click on that, you'll be able to jump into previous meetings, the recordings. If back, our agenda sitting up here on the right and the planning board meeting minutes are down here on the right. And I believe we're caught up to date, which is great. Thank you so much, Susan and everybody else. Also, we have a section here that's projects for review. What we'll do is each week or each time we need, we have an updated plan or plans that we're reviewing. When we receive them as a planning board, we'll have them posted up here on the planning board website. So you can see the three preliminary preliminary subdivision plans for 50 Quanapawat, 200 Quanapawat and North Ave are here to review. So with that, let me share. Can you see the mini-meeting agenda? Okay, thank you. So as everyone knows, the notice of meeting continuing that we are to be consistent with the governor's orders and provisions of open meeting laws. We are under the following, we're in a Zoom meeting, so it's not an in-person meeting. Item number two, approval of meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions on the November 5th and November 10th meeting minutes? Okay, somebody make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to accept the November 10th, 2020 regular or the planning board minutes as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill? Okay, you're on mute, but I saw your hand. Thank you.
And I'll make a second motion to accept the November 5th, 2020 planning board minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, everybody, thank you. Okay, so we continued our public hearing from our last meeting for the articles proposed to amend zoning bylaws. And I just want to say that the meeting that we had on sorry, November 5th to the open meeting, that was wonderful to get a lot of information out there and open. I learned a lot from that meeting from the landowners, from our public and from our board members. So it was really good to hear that. So tonight, and I'm just going to run down our items real quickly. So we're going to review and continue this public hearing. And we definitely want to hear from the public. I'm going to do a quick recap from our last meeting to get us going. And I'd like to hear from Bill Conley, from the Friends of Lake Quanapawat, if he wants to present or has any words to say moving forward. After that, after the public hearing, whether we close public hearing or continue public hearing to another meeting, we'll move on to item number four, five and six, which are the preliminary subdivision plans for the properties that will be discussing into the public hearing. The item number seven, Glendale Ave, Osapi Lane, Setsey, Shurty. And that's something we'll do after for item eight, reviews ZBA's ruling on Cherry Lane variance. We have to have a short discussion on that and set some future meeting dates. Excuse me. And then we'll review our December and January meetings if we could do that. So with that, let me stop my share. I'd love, before we get into hearing from Bill Conley and the Friends of Lake Quanapawat, I'd like to just quickly recap what was discussed. And as you know, learned a lot. One thing I learned was that there were some plans that were discussed with the Friends of Lake Quanapawat and with the public regarding a 485 unit complex. We also learned in that meeting, it's a 25 acre site that could hold to the current zoning bylaws, 870 units. The property owners in good faith have been working with the Friends of Lake Quanapawat to figure out what will work on the site along Quanapawat Parkway. Nothing's been proposed to the town officially. And during our planning board meetings, we, on October 27th, just to back up a little bit, the property owners presented three A and R plans, approval not required plans, which were within state guidelines and endorsed by our board. There was also three preliminary subdivision plans presented and accepted. These, these are the plans that were on the website that I pointed to. These plans were presented at our last, at the public hearing on November 5th. And that's what we discussed and reviewed. Actually, sorry, they were presented at the meeting last Tuesday. Let's see. The preliminary subdivision plans that were presented and accepted on October 27th lock in the current zoning bylaws for three years. It's not unlimited. It's not forever. It's the three years from that date that they were accepted. So that's just something I want to make sure is clear. So the two proposed articles that were going to town meeting, that didn't go because we kept the public meeting open. Because as a board, we felt to keep the public meeting was a way for us to really come up with a a solution for what's happening for development and future development in limited business and for multifamily housing. And however, these zoning bylaw amendments proposals will be written and possibly brought in on the next town warrant. Sorry, stumbling over some words, just want to make sure I get all the information out there. The good news, and I'll close with this, the good news is that when the project is proposed, whatever is proposed, it will go before the ZBA for a special permit as needed for the multifamily housing located in a limited business district. So no matter what happens in our meetings tonight, public hearings, zoning, all this, this project at the top of the lake along Quanapawat Parkway, it would go in front of the ZBA and the public would have time to review and voice their opinion with the ZBA. So with that, I want to invite Bill Conley up. And if you want to present, if you want to talk, however you want to use your time, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Conley, 83 Elm Street. Well, I'd like to just make a few remarks. And I think it would be helpful, being one of the sponsors of the article for our sponsors and our other signers and members and supporters, just sort of go back and look at what we were trying to accomplish last time. We're still interested in the article. And sort of go over that. And it seemed to go off the, off the rails, so to speak, two weeks ago. I'm not exactly sure why, but it would be helpful if we could, if we could proceed along, looking at what we were trying to accomplish by the article. And we were really only trying to do two things. And we can maybe look at other elements that were entered in at last meeting, the meeting of two weeks ago and see if they have bearing or not. And that's where, you know, well, I still have some confusion and perhaps our members and maybe everybody has. So if we could proceed along those lines, Mr. Chairman, we would appreciate it.
That sounds great. And I did some digging to, and I copied and pasted into a Word document what the current zoning bylaw reads as. And maybe we can start there and look at the article and those two points. And why don't we go over those two points first of what we want to accomplish? What are the two points? Just to be clear, and then we can look at the zoning bylaws, how it's written for multifamily housing about density.
Okay, so we were, we were hoping, the way our article was written, to amend table 190-23-B, Table 1, Table of Use Regulations. So we were approaching this on a use basis and we had hoped to prohibit in that table, mid-rise apartments currently in that table, they are allowed by special permit. We were hoping to put an N where the SP is in that table. And thus then, mid-rise apartments, which are basically of a scale up to six stories and the unit numbers that you mentioned, just in your introduction. So eliminating that from the table would eliminate that from mid-rise apartments being allowed in that district by special permit. Moreover, we were looking at 190-32, multifamily dwellings. And we put language or we intended to put language in there, notwithstanding any other provision in this chapter. And this is the dimension area. So we were talking use, but we also put in the dimension. And if I have it here, and I think I do, notwithstanding any other provisions in this chapter, where housing and whether garden apartments, attached dwellings or combinations of same are proposed within the limited business district, a maximum of 14 units per acre of lot area is allowed, or to see what the town will do about it. So we're hoping that language would add additional guidance relative to the zoning so that the zoning would indeed be limited in that area. And we were talking units because use does talk units. And I think the dimensions table and language in and around there, where of opinion, it doesn't have a bearing on it. It may have some value, but it wouldn't have had a bearing on our article. And it might be helpful if you have access to the current zoning, Mr. Chair, to go back to the general description where we can actually see in the current zoning language. And contrary, what might have crept in two weeks ago, we were using the current zoning in our, in our written article. But it describes limited business and what's allowed there. And it also describes mid-rise apartments. And it might be helpful if people aren't familiar with that. If they are, then we can move past that. So that, that's, that's where we'd like to start. We feel we have a well-written article restricting use. And that use by special permit would be flagged off, limiting the higher level development units. And also the height requirement up to six, limiting it by that, and also putting some language in to to also back that up.
Thank you. Are we still thinking it's going to be one article? Or do we think it's two?
It is one article. I'm not so sure how to answer that, other than saying it is one article. We only need to discuss one article. And that, I mean, that's your call, but in our opinion, we really have no immediate place to go with this. But I think it would be helpful for everybody to, you know, recognize what the article was about. And however, this meeting is going to end or be continued, at least we'd be on a solid footing for ending it or the next meeting.
Right. And I think we're, we're heading in the right direction. I feel like tonight's a new start. Let's get this written the way it needs to be with all the information in it that you're looking to see and have it pulling from the correct, the zoning bylaws. So what I can do, and before I do this, I want to open it up to our board to see if there are any other, any comments or questions or direction you'd like to see us go in first. I don't know, Matt, if you have any comment or would you like us to proceed as we're going?
Well, yeah, I do have some comments, but we can wait till later. You know, there are more to do with how this came about and the numbers, you know, how that was determined, things like that.
Okay.
Could I just add one more thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
As you know, in order to get an article to the town warrant, town council would review it on behalf of the town council. So Mr. Mullen would have reviewed our article prior to the town council recommending it go to the warrant. So I have to, I have to, I have to think that our article, at least through Mr. Mullen's review, was determined to be suitable to be referred on to you. And so how you would determine also town meeting. So that, I think that's something that we should keep in mind.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good comment. And I know we have, there's two different parts to this. The section 190-23B, the table going from special permit to not allowed, mid-rise, that is. And then the other part on section 190-32, the use. And I think that's where the discrepancy was found, where it's not by number of units as much as it is by square footage. And that was one of my first questions when we did open the public meeting. It was like, how, how is this working? Is it meant to be by units or by square footage? And, and I could see where there's some confusion. And honestly, as Matt Lowry mentioned in a previous meeting, we've had some confusion on the board too, because what's up on the town website versus what's printed does not always parallel each other, there's some discrepancies. And that's something that we should get town council involved if we do find any of those.
Well, that, that's probably a good suggestion, but you, you just prefaced your immediate remarks with uses and that, that's dimensional, that, that section six is dimensional. And you know, I'm, I'm where of an opinion and perhaps we can find out. We, we really need to find out. But we're, we're not sure. It was discussed two weeks ago, but we're, we're not sure why it would have a bearing. So maybe we can find that out.
Okay, and tonight we can take a closer look of exactly what's written and see how how the article can be reworded to fit into that, meaning the correct section or whatever it needs to be. Just before we move on, Bill, Megan or Joanne, do you have any comments about the direction we're going in? Does it seem clear?
Yeah, to me, it's, I think it's the right direction. I, I like the idea of you showing the current correct zoning bylaws. So we're all clear on which one is correct. So there isn't that same discrepancy that we experienced last time.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. All right, I will share. So you should be able to see our current, so this is through the zoning resources on, from the Town Planner website, zoning resources. There's a few here, zoning bylaws is what I'm under. When I click on zoning bylaws, it will bring you to this Ecode 360.com where we have the current zoning bylaws. This is section 190-32, multifamily dwellings, mixed use development. I'm not going to read through this top part, but what I'm going to focus on is this density under B. The minimum lot size for housing or mixed use project under the section is 4,000 square feet. Where housing, whether mid-rise apartments, garden apartments, attached dwellings or combinations of same are proposed within walking distance of commuter rail stations measured at 2,500 foot radius from the commuter rail station boarding area to the nearest lot of the development parcel. A minimum of 750 square feet of lot area per unit is required. Otherwise, a minimum of 1,200 square feet of lot area of lot area per unit is required. And that's the part that changed, I believe in 2015. There is no additional lot area requirement under C, under three, sorry, B3. There is no additional lot area requirement for other uses, whether permitted by right or by special permit within the zoning district as provided in section 190-23, Table of Use Regulations. And the rest goes into parking and area. And this is part of the lot coverage. And if we look at minimum setbacks and all that are in here, and it discusses some more information too. But I think if we can, we would be focusing on this B, minimum lot and density to figure out using the 1,200 square feet of lot area per unit as required. If we do want to look at some of the wording under the multifamily, multifamily dwelling, mixed use development, there's some wording in here too that we might want to use. A lot of it comes from the special permit to protect the economic health and livability of the street neighborhood where the proposed project is located. So there's some wording in here that I believe will really help reword the article so it does play into what these zoning bylaws are meant to be. Now, I, this is where I wanted to start tonight's meeting. And Bill, I hope this is, this is in the direction you were hoping for.
Mr. Chairman, I, if, if you take the zoning and look at it by section, you, you come to definitions that are in the current zoning that talk in terms of, of units per acre. And then you have a table based right after that, that if it's adjusted, essentially would be zoning that, in our opinion, would not allow this particular section to be, to have any effect. If it's talking dimensions, it's hard to, if there's zoning that talks in units, and then to bring in a table that talks in terms of dimensions, it's, it's confusing. And I think this is where we probably will not be able to agree tonight. But where we, we might want to make a referral to Mr. Mullen to be absolutely clear. Because it, it, it's not, it's not clear. I don't know if it can be clear, and I think we may end up in the same spot that we were last two weeks ago.
Understood. And I'd really like us tonight to be able to come to a understanding where we do have Article 2 as proposed, written in a way where it does speak to the language in here, meaning it's not just by taking the number of units down to a certain number. And if I remember correctly, it was 50% as proposed. But you know, let me, let me bring up the article. I believe I have it. Well, I might not have it on this computer. I did have a town computer, but I no longer have it. And I'm in between some files.
You, you're trying to bring up?
The article. Is it in the presentation, Bill?
I can bring it up, Mr. Chair, if you.
Yeah, let me, um, let me stop sharing and allow you to share. Cause I think it would be good to look at that article too. Okay, you should be able to share it.
Can you see that?
Not yet.
I may not. It seems that where I'm trying to get at is, is blocked. Let me put down participants. That should do it.
No, don't see it yet. There we go. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's right, I just, just found him on the town website too, under the warrant. But that's, that's perfect. So if we read through this, it's referencing table one, which is still the same table with the, the first part of this was the use from SPTA and meaning not allowed. If we look at 190-32, the mixed use development, and this is where there's the discrepancy, where is it? The density by maximum of 14 units, units as opposed to, let me see, I know I have it here too. Cause it is in the written copy. This written copy that I have is from 2013 or 14. And 2015 is, I believe, when this was updated. Have a special permit. Missing a page in here too. So with this, this is the article that we're focusing on. And if, my thought would be, how do we reword the bottom part? So it's not speaking to the maximum number of units per acre allowed, but it's speaking to the square footage of the unit as it's written in the, the current bylaw. I have too many tabs in the book. It starts to be. Doesn't matter. So planning board, Matt, you said you had some comments about how this would be or where it came from written wise? Would you like to share that?
Yeah, I was just trying to, to figure out how 14 units per acre, how that number came about. You know, what the thought process was, thought process was. You know, what the thought process was, thought process was, and just, you know, where'd that number come from?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Matt, it's, it's in the, it's in the, if you want to go to 190-6, it's in the current zoning. Do you want me to share back to you, Mr. Chair?
Well, I mean, I could read this part, you, sure, if you stop sharing. I, I, I don't have, I mean, I, I can't just hold it up to the screen to see it. But 190-6, number four.
I may be able to share.
I'm sorry?
I may be able to share.
Okay, oh, go ahead.
So, I guess we have to assume these are the current, current zoning laws. And these, these are descriptions, and, and here, multiple residences.
Sorry, Bill, to interrupt, we're not seeing the, I think you need to stop share and then share again.
Okay.
Right, and then share screen and, and click on the.
No.
Not yet. So I do have the one, nope, don't see it. I do have 190-6, number four here in front of me, multiple residences, multiple residents. The multiple residence district is composed of those specific areas potentially suitable for multi-family dwellings and attached dwellings in parentheses, townhouses. It is divided into two parts. MR-1 allows garden apartments and attached dwellings at a maximum density of 14 units per acre. A special permit is required. Height could not exceed three stories. MR-2 allows garden apartments, attached dwellings, and mid-rise apartments at a maximum density of 36 units per acre. A special permit is required. Height could not exceed six stories. And Matt, I believe that's where this came from, as far as the wording. I'm not sure, Matt, if your question is, where did the number 14 come from, from the 36?
No, that, that was my question, where that came from, so that answers it.
Mr. Chair, you might also want to look at six, number six, limited business, because that's the district, that's the zoning that we're talking about, and it does explain how special permitting is possible within that district that allows residential.
Right, section 190-6, number six, A6, limited business. The limited business district includes business areas suitable for office and predominantly non-retail business uses and possibly multi-residence use, uses, in parentheses, with special permit. Most limited business districts are located near Route 128 or other major roadways. And I think from the zoning map, I only found two.
You're correct.
Yeah.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if, if the board is comfortable trying to rewrite the article and, and change the dimensions from the, from section, I guess it's six, the dimensional regulations and the table that goes along with it. And we're talking use, I'm not so sure how successful, with all due respect to the board, I'm not so sure how successful we would be.
Right.
We might entertain, and we might be quite willing to close the discussion on this at this point, and with your ability to make a referral to Mr. Mullen, and perhaps also include how the housing production plan, which was introduced two weeks ago, as being zoning, and again, created, I think, some confusion. If it would go back to Mr. Mullen, if he would consider it, and we would, we would still be standing behind our article and the table adjustment. It's just going to be very hard to bring in something else that seems to be talking in different, a little bit different language. And I'm not so sure, it's, it's in, the use intention is clear, the dimensional intention is not. So I, I would offer that, if you want, want to consider that. It might, might save us a bit of time, and if you decide to reconvene at some time, or we at least get a ruling from Mr. Mullen, or an opinion from Mr. Mullen, it might be very helpful, whatever might happen in the future.
That could be, that could be a good direction. And for us to be able to have an article we can recommend as a planning board, I, I think that's probably the important part to get to. And yes, we are going to need help from Town Council to understand, there is a discrepancy in the zoning bylaws. And honestly, I don't know what to do about it. We have that 190-6, A4, that clearly states the density, 14 units per acre, and 36 units per acre for MR1 and MR2. And then we also have under 190-32, which, with the use of dimensions, which doesn't contradict, but definitely makes it more difficult to understand, because it speaks in square footage. So, and I think that's where we have to have a ruling on to, if it's written correctly, and it does start to look at 190-6 and incorporates 130, 190-32, to make sure in the wording, it's not just maybe, maybe it's not just the number of units, but it also references square footage to cover both.
I'd, I'd like to think if we do make the referral to Mr. Mullen, that we, we could approach the board in some way on a, on a planning basis, and, and know exactly what we would be talking about at that, that point.
Yep.
I don't, I don't think there's a, an urgency, we have no town meeting to, to go to or proposed, at least on the immediate timeframe. I think we, you know, we, everybody acknowledges that we were under a tough time limits, and it probably didn't, didn't help us getting clarity, but I, I would appreciate if we could at least have a better understanding with the help of Mr. Mullen, and see what develops along those lines.
It's, okay, and any comments from the board?
I'm okay with that.
I just have a, what is Mr. Mullen going to review and comment on? Because this, I mean, this isn't his article, so I'm just kind of curious as to what we're expecting that he's going to, to do with this.
Matt, would it be fair to ask Mr. Mullen to provide some, some hierarchy on which part of the zoning, does, does 190-6, A4 nullify 190-32, use of dimension? Or is it, which one supersedes the other? Because they're speaking in different units versus square footage. And my thought was, is it possible to have to address both unit, unit and, unit number and square footage? To take care of both of them? I mean, personally, I'd like to go back and fix it, fixing the zoning bylaws, so they don't have discrepancies. And I think that's what, I don't want to speak for what Mr. Mullen would say, but I think that would be the right course of action, is to fix the zoning bylaws, so they do work with each other.
All right, I, I think if we're going to get clarity on, on what, you know, our current, the interpretation of our current zoning is, that's one thing. But to ask him to review this article and make suggested changes, I don't think that's really something that he would, you know, that's not part of what he does. So that, I mean, if you're framing his, get clarity on our existing zoning, and then this article is rewritten to, you know, based on his interpretation, then that's one thing. So if we're expecting him to take this article and, and rewrite it, I don't think he's going to do that.
Understood. I, I'm looking for clarity, and
Okay.
we do want him to review an article, tonight, we can write something that he can review.
Well, I don't know if we can write something tonight, because I don't know if we come to any, you know, but
Understood.
If, if a more refined article that needs to come about, comes to us, then we can make a recommendation, so.
Before we hear from the public, is any planning board members would like to, to share their comments? No, okay. And let's see, this, um, this public hearing has been open, it was never closed, so we can continue that, we don't have to close it tonight. Mr. Crone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Christopher Crone from 114 Main Street. Respectfully, sir, I don't think that this is a matter of ambiguity, both within the town's code and with respect to the proposed articles. It's not a question of whether it's section 190-6 or 190-32. When you look at the language of the proposed amendment, and it says, notwithstanding any other provisions in this chapter, and then it sets forth the proposed limitations on the number of units. What the notwithstanding language means is, regardless of what 160-190-6 says, or 190-32, or any other provision in the chapter, here's the limitations we're seeking to impose. So I don't think there is any ambiguity in terms of the article, I don't think it needs to go to Mr. Mullen, I don't think it needs any further clarification in terms of what, what the article is proposing. You know, it's, it's not a question of vagueness, perhaps it's a question of breadth. Perhaps this is a a more broadly defined limitation, in terms of it speaking to the number of units and not a specific area limitation. But that's not a matter of vagueness, and there's a difference between the two. So respectfully, I think that this article does stand on its own. And I'd be interested to hear if there are other concerns that the board has, or whether there's anything that the board is specifically looking for to address this issue, because I, I respectfully, I don't think there is an issue.
Thank you. And it, you, you could be right with, it's not an issue, but if it goes to town meeting with a recommendation from our planning board, and during town meeting, it's brought up from one of the property owner's lawyers, or whatever it might be, that it's invalid because it's contradicted by another zoning bylaw, it, I just think it's going to bring down the validity of the article.
I understand, but.
Covers both sides, I want to make sure it covers both sides of it.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
And, and I appreciate that, and if there are concerns, you know, we're willing to address them. But I, I respectfully, I don't think there is, given the language of the provision itself, which says notwithstanding the other provisions, which means there can't be another conflict with another provision, because it says they don't matter, what, regardless of what those other provisions say, here's what this, this limitation is on this particular business district. And so there is no conflict.
Okay. Are there any other hands up from the public? I see Brian McGrail, you have your hand up? And then Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I share the screen for a minute? Because I, I think I can shed some light on some of the stuff that Mr. Conley was addressing.
Yes, please.
Might be helpful, and, and I think it's always good to get a, an opinion or advice from Town Council, but this might help in the direction that you want to go with him. Let me try to bring this up. Can you see this?
Yes.
So, when, when Bill's referring to 196, what 196 is, is, is a, what it does, it's, it describes the zoning districts, it doesn't have anything to do with the use. So that's what 196 is. And, and I think you should get a clarification on this from Tom Mullen. But the MR, the multiple residence district that you're talking about, the MR, MR, multiple residence, the MR district, that would be a specific district, if you look up here in 195, Tunnel Wakefield is divided into the following classes of districts, and it lists them all, one of which is the multiple residence district. Now, that's in addition to the limited business district, right, that, that's the subject of this article, okay? So, when you go down, it describes all the districts, and the multiple residence district is its own independent district, and independent from the limited business district and all the other districts. And then as you scroll down, all the above district locations are, are shown on the zoning map. Right, so I know the history of this, so when you, when you, when you go to the zoning map, let me see if I can. So this is the zoning map, and, and this labels all of the districts in the zoning map?
Yes.
There is no multiple residence district in the Tunnel Wakefield.
The zoning map's not showing, but understood, your point being, in the limited business district is separate, the.
There it is.
Separate.
So here's our zoning map, right? And, and this shows all the districts, and, and the multiple residence district is not, doesn't exist. It was always contemplated that at some point, Wakefield might adopt a multiple residence district on the map, but that never occurred. So, so that, you know, so I think that's, we need a clarification from, from Tom on that. And, you know, that, that the multiple residence district is not applicable to anything, because it doesn't exist, period, on our map.
So a clarification.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that the language that Bill's proposing doesn't work, or it works, or, you know, I'm not here to do that, but, because maybe it might, as Mr. Crune suggested. But, but I just wanted to point that out for folks, because there's been some confusion on that tonight. In the multiple residence district that, that's referenced in that six is just not applicable anywhere, because it's not on our map. Doesn't exist.
And to me, the confusing part is when, in limited business, when it references the multi-residence, that's where it becomes confusing, because what is it referring to as a general description? If you look back to 190-6, A4, it's the only definition I could find in here on what a multi, a multiple residence district would be.
No, because if you, and again, I'm just trying to shed light for everybody, because if you go to, if you go to the definition section of our bylaw, 194, multi-dwelling, multi-family dwelling is, is defined, right? So.
But multi, multiple residence is not defined there.
Where you going, where, where you pulling that from?
That's under the 190-6 general description.
But that's in the multi, that's in the, that's in the MR district, which, which isn't, isn't applicable.
Okay.
So, and I, you know, and again, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to shed light for everybody, because I think it will be helpful, just for, for folks to understand. It might help you in the, in the, in the questions that you're going to ask Tom to opine on. And then the other part of it too is, you know, what I would suggest is, you know, this is going to continue, that someone should reach out to the only other property owner in town that's affected. that someone should reach out to the only other property owner in town that's affected by this, which is the Sheridan Hotel, that has no idea that this is going on, and is going to downzone his property potentially, to, you know, where this is continuing, and it's being talked about, to invite him, because, you know, maybe if folks deem that that wasn't necessary, he would help, wanna have some input, and that property could somehow be potentially removed.
All right, that's a really good comment, thank you.
You know.
We'll make sure that's in the notes.
I have no, I don't represent him, I don't.
That, that's good, though, it's a good, it's good to include them in what we're discussing.
I hope that helps, that's all I wanted to point out.
No, thanks. And I, I know it does become confusing, and under section 190-32 in the book before 2015, it does reference Board of Appeals in the MR-1 district, MR-2 district, which goes right back to that definitions, that, that, I think that's where it's most confusing, and to me, it needs to just be sorted out. Mr. Mitchell.
Yep. Hi. Okay, hi, hi, Bob Mitchell here, hi, Bob Mitchell, 6 Spalding Street. Just a couple of notes. One is related to these overlay districts. Well, let me, let me step back. I highly encourage the planning board, and Brian McGreal also stated this, that they reach out to Tom Mullen. That is standard operating procedure, because how else you gonna, obviously, there's a lot of, and great discussion tonight, and people are struggling with this. It's very complicated, I understand pieces of it, I'm no expert in it. I've actually written two town meeting articles that passed a town meeting, Loney Island and the the crematorium article. I wrote those with Tom Mullen, so he couldn't be more open to, to doing this. Take him, be a jiffy, so I highly recommend that. I think for, for everybody, for all, all players involved. One cool, one kinda question I have, and Brian McGreal maybe to, to expand on this. We have multiple overlay districts in Wakefield, which, which lay on top of all these individual zoning, arcane zoning rules, and they often, if they're, as a prior speaker spoke, if they're, if they may very well supersede the underlying district, like we have a mixed-use signage, municipal, wireless, assisted living overlay district that layer on top of that. The one that, that my, my question is, the one that passed in 2015, that was basically two, two circles in Wakefield, about 2,500 feet in diameter, around both train stations. One, if we do talk to Mullen, that overlay district, that map, should be on the town's website. So I would recommend, it's the overlay, several of the overlay districts are on the town website, that one is not. So that should be added, that should be brought to his attention. And then two, my question really for Brian is, and this is, I'm just wrapping this up, is, is this parcel within 2,500 feet? Because from my look, from my view, it is not. So that 2015 overlay district would not be applied to this parcel. That would be something you'd wanna verify, either Brian could speak to it, maybe he knows it already, or that would be another question I would recommend Tom Mullen lay down the law on. That's a 2015, 2,500 foot, two circles in town, around each, around each train station. Does that apply to the slot? And the map should be added to the town's website.
Yeah, I can answer that for Bob if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm also.
I don't think it's even close, Bob.
Yeah.
I don't even think it's close to being within that.
Yeah, 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 because clearly well over a mile. Yeah.
Okay.
Not in the ballpark.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Yep.
Let me lower your hand. Mr. Crune, your hand is up. Please, yep.
Hi, Chris Crone from 114 Main Street, and I ju- I just wanted to address kinda two quick points here. You know, I think the reference to 190-4, the, the multiple residence district issue, this was only referred to, and by way of answer to, I believe, a question from Mr. Laurie, as to where did the language in the proposed article arise from? But much beyond that, it really has no bearing on, on the question as to the, the language itself. Language stands on its own. It was simply, I think the reference was made to 190-4 in answering that question. So that's, you know, whether or not the town has an MR district or not, really doesn't matter. That's, it was really just a, a reference to the, to the language. And then the second point, you know.
Can I respond to that? And this is where, this is where I, I'm embarrassed. 190-32, and I know it's hard to see when I hold it up, but in the book, the, the way the wording is in the article reads from the outdated 190-32B, where it does mention the density of MR-1 and MR-2 per units. And I think that's where the threading of the new article two is reading off of the outdated section numbers and information. And I believe that's where it needs to read properly and be written properly into it.
I'm, I guess I'm not, I'm not following you completely, as, as I understand it, we're, the amendment is being made, and, and perhaps just this, this question would help a lot. Is, is the, is the version online the correct version or the incorrect version?
My understanding, the version online is the current version. And that would be a question for Mr. Mullen, because it, what's written and picked up at Town Hall would have this 2014 version in my hand, would have the 2015 updates that were approved at town meeting as part of this, which would change the wording in 190-32, where there is no B anymore. There is no density about units, which is written in this version, but on the website, under the E-code, it's written differently. I believe this article needs to read the same way it's written in the 2015, 2015 version that's on the website, and not from the outdated 2014.
Right, but I, I don't, maybe I'm wrong here, but I don't think it does read off the outdated version. I think it reads on the, the current version, which doesn't reference the MR district.
Okay.
So, um, obviously, that, this is a point that, that needs some clarification, and, and I don't know that we're gonna get that on this call, and I certainly don't have the answer as to which is the right, right code, but. I guess.
I think you had another point, if you wanna.
I did, yes. To address the other issue with respect to the, the, the property, I think it was the Sheridan Hotels property. You know, and, and I think that really is one of the points that we might be able to accomplish here tonight, is, you know, I think the proposed amendment here was not intended to impact the Sheridan's property, and, you know, I think a simple verbiage change saying that, you know, limiting this amendment to properties that are adjacent to the lake would, would account for that. And so I would propose, and, and I certainly don't wanna speak for the friends of Lake Q, but it seems to me that that would be a proposal that would, would alleviate at least that concern, and we could address that tonight.
I agree. I think there's some wording that could definitely change this to, to limit it to this area, that is the reason why everybody has so much, has put so much effort and passion behind this, is because it's so important, it's at the lake, not across 128 on Audubon Road. Understood. That's, that's a really good comment.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could just affirm what Mr. Crune mentioned, we had mentioned that at the last meeting, and you know, we, we thought language, as he described, would be, our intent would certainly not impact any other business district, limited business district in that area that is far separated from the lake, so we would certainly accommodate that in easily.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Somebody, I'm sorry, somebody had their blue hand up, and I think I lowered it by mistake. So did somebody just have their hand up, and I lowered it? Mr. Mitchell, yes, please. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, super quick. I can tell you emphatically that the E360 has errors in it. I'm quite familiar with it, because I emailed some to Betsy and Paul Revvis, the prior town planner. Some of them were made, some aren't made, so that can be a challenge. I'll just leave it at that. So that would be another good question for Mullen, just to clarify, just to add on top of what other folks said. Thank you.
And we are aware of that, and I know Mr. Lowery wants to jump in, but I know at some point, maybe 2016, during one of our planning board meetings, it, I don't know if, I can't remember if there was a motion, but it, it was asked of the town planner to try to rectify any discrepancies within the, the zoning bylaws that were online and what is written at Town Hall.
Yes, sorry, I didn't mean to. Yeah, he did. In fact, he and Betsy did work on it quite hard through the fall, and they got a lot of it cleaned up. But I know there's some small issues. Whether they pertain to this conversation, I can't, I can't answer you that, but it's a known issue that there are still some discrepancies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Bill, that was, um, I know Paul and I had discussed, and, and he's gone over previously, it was the subdivision rules and regulations, it wasn't the zoning regulations.
It wasn't, okay, by mistake.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't gone through and, and picked apart the zoning regulations, because I really don't deal with it that much. The subdivision rules and regulations, that I knew for a fact were multiple errors, and I have a document somewhere, I'll have to pull it out, where Paul went through and, and redlined all the, all the issues that were found. Part of the problem is when this, when this stuff gets online, there's no date to say when it's effective, when it was revised. So something can be changed tomorrow, and nobody knows it, unless you print it out. I run into this a lot, and my businesses will, will print something out, and then when we go back to it, and someone pulls up, they have a different, different version. So this is one of the, one of the problems with things online, is people just assume it's correct, whether it is or not. So just to go back to what, what my comment was, and got into a little bit of discussion, is where this, this number, 14 units per acre came from, you know, thank you for answering that. My next question is gonna be, is this an appropriate number in today's world for this? I understand it was in a, in a zone that never, that doesn't really exist. And is this the appropriate number that should be? Have, has any studies been done that this is a doable number, that makes sense? Is it, because, you know, running the numbers for 200 Quanapower, because a lot of the site is wetlands, that gives credit to a lot more units there, that are gonna get it piled on an, an upland area. So I'm just curious if anyone has run the numbers to see, you know, is this what your intention was? Same when you go back to the, the Sheridan property, that's, you know, you take the numbers there, you're taking parts that are wetlands, and including that, so that would be my, you know, has anyone run the numbers that has proposed this zoning article?
No, Mr. Conley, I'm not sure if you can answer that or not, or.
He's muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Conley, you're muted. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure what "run the numbers" might mean. I, I do acknowledge that it, including what the number could be, includes the wetland, seems to be a little logical. But we had two choices, Matt, and the current language spoke to 14 units per acre. We knew that the higher limits contained in MR2 would be something that would be very unfavorable to the lake and the lake users and the town. So, yeah, the, the number was using the current zoning, and at, at some point, someone must have thought that those two levels to be permitted represented some, some logic. Again, probably not an answer to what you're looking for.
No, considering it, it's referencing a, a district that doesn't exist in town, that's why I, I have a little, you know, gives me a little pause is to, you know, it's, it's one thing to, to do some calculations and see what would fit in town, and, and, you know, what also is fair to the people that own the land, because you are imposing this on people that own land there. Or this just was a number that was, was mined out of what we have, and so it's gotta be good enough. That, that would be.
Respectfully, yeah, respectfully, residential has to be permitted. So the owners there, and, and certainly, we, we don't wanna impact negatively the owners in, in the, in the business district, but changing to residential brings implications for the lake and the town, and, you know, raising this issue to you, and and raising this issue and discussing with town people, I think is doing the town a service, because you're asking good questions. What, you know, what numbers can the town accommodate? What numbers can the, what is the right number? That's a tough question. We, you know, we hope to find the right number, this is, this is, we're dialoguing. We appreciated the last meeting, two weeks ago, Mr. Doherty made two references to continue to work with the Friends of Lake Quanapower, and we intend to continue to work with the developer. But we also feel that we need to broaden the discussion and bring town officials in, and more people, not just FOLQ. I think it's a point where we really need to be talking this up. This asset is so important to the town. This lake area is so important to the town, that we have to do the right thing. So we may be stumbling along a little bit. I still support going back to Mr. Mullen to get some clarity around the article. The number, the number is to be found. The number has to be found, I guess, is our position.
Well, you know, with all due respect, you're, you're presenting something, you wanna present something to town meeting that is gonna set what the number is. So this is why we need to have these discussions and have these, you know, these studies or whatever, before we get to town meeting, because after this goes to town meeting, and, and if it passes, we're stuck with it until another zoning change comes up to fix it. So, and that was my comment on, on taking the entire limited business zone and changing it, because there is one property that's not next to the lake that is gonna be affected. So, you know, if you wanna rezone that, then that needs to be done. We, we can't do a zoning map amendment. I don't think you can just put language in there that says excluding, you know, anything not next to the lake, unless you wanna do an overlay district, which maybe you wanna do an overlay district, but that may affect other districts in town, too, that are adjacent to the lake. So there are a lot of things that need to be worked out here before, you know, before this advances. And, and that's why I was kinda critical that this was rushed so much, because there's a lot of things to work through here. And, and I'm glad that we're having this conversation, and I hope that we can, you know, get to something where everyone I'm not gonna say is happy, but everyone bears the same burden.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Conley. Ms. Delavope, you have your hand up. Thank you for being patient.
Um, hi, Bron Delavope, it's Cyrus Street. I just wanna speak briefly, just to sort, sort of the larger issue that has evolved during, during these meetings, particularly tonight, that I, I think, I think it's quite apparent that our zoning bylaws need, need a, a revamp. And this is not something that's gonna happen overnight, it's probably gonna take a very, very long time. But I, I don't think that anyone who wants to write an article for town meeting is really gonna have an easy time of it, and, and I think that there needs to be a, a level playing ground for everybody, and, and that means that our bylaws are gonna have to be mitigated, they're gonna have to be perhaps rewritten, clarified, cleaned up, and that's, that's a massive, massive undertaking, but transparent. And that's, that's a massive, massive undertaking, but transparency demands that. It's well overdue. I still support the intent of this article is to protect the lake. I understand the property rights thing. But when it comes to the lake, it's a little bit different. Once the lake is, has been compromised, that's it. It's compromised forever. So I still support the intent of this. But again, speaking to the larger issue, the discussion tonight has made it abundantly clear that our zoning bylaws need to be revamped and cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne, you have your hand up. You know, as a board member, you can actually speak when you need to speak too, if you like. Thanks.
Yeah, so I do agree with Bronwyn that it sounds like our zoning bylaws definitely do need to be cleaned up. And that would make things a lot easier. But going back and taking this like kind of a step higher level, it seems like we really need a discussion about where the Friends of the Lake stand in terms of what exactly they envision the property to look like. What do you really want? Do you want no mid-rise apartments at all? Are you, you know, in terms of the number of units with the, the 14 number, it sounded like we were still talking about hundreds of units, residential units being built there. So what do you envision being there if it's not mid-rise apartments? What would you like to see? Do you know?
I don't know, Mr. Connolly, if that's something you want to answer. You don't have to, but if it's something that was.
Just in a general way, Joanne, you're, you're asking a very good question. I mean, when someone proposes development, large development, residential development, first of its kind in that area of town, and the size beyond anything that's in town. When you try to envision it, it's, it's abstract. You can't get your head around it. It's very, very hard. So we have been working in the abstract. We have working with plans and to a degree, some visuals of what it might look like. But what came to the fore in every meeting with, with the developer were height and density. And again, in the, in the abstract, but you, you would know it, a mistake there would be, you know, call it a permanent mistake. So we, the provision that we were seeking by eliminating mid-rise apartment would limit three, just three stories. And it would limit a number that seemed to us to be pretty, pretty aggressive, but at least not as aggressive as the higher limit allowed by MR2. So I'm giving you an answer that's probably not going to be satisfactory because we are still dealing with something conceptually. It's hard to imagine, but we did, we did want to take a, take a shot at it, take a stand. And, and the zoning Board of Appeals may be doing, you know, the same thing downstream. But we'll, we'll, we'll see about that. And we're, we're actually encouraged as we talk more about this, everybody's inputs from planners and town council and, and developer and Friends of the Lake. We probably can come, we probably can come to terms with something like this, but we're not, we're not there yet. We're, we're perhaps going to get there. We hope.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Sorry. Is, you know, one Sunday afternoon, I took a walk up Main Street and stopped at different places and took some pictures of across the lake. And I walked on the house side, not the lakeside and sat on the bench at the top under the tree and just watched like the darkness come to go down, the, the lights go up and the light pollution is insane up behind that whole area. And just looking at that profile and looking at the, the existing structures all the way to North Ave and that area. There's such an opportunity. There's so much land back there. And I just feel, you know, I guess a question to you, Mr. Connolly. Have you been approached by the owners to set up a date for another meeting to review what should be there or a discussion?
Yes, Mrs. Spaulding. We, we don't have a date, but we've shared some ideas back and forth. I'll say indirectly, but positively. I can't, I can't really comment much beyond that because I don't know much beyond that. But the dialogue will remain open as it has been for two years now. Almost this month, we've been dialoguing first with Waterstone and since February with Cabot, Cabot and Forbes. So we will continue to talk. We're revising what we think as we get more inputs and talk to more people and get people interested in doing planning and people taking a town view from, from the different boards and offices in town that, you know, have a stake in this. So, you know, we hope something materializes there. We really do.
Thank you.
There has been, there has been conversation, but we'll see, we'll see where it goes.
Thank you. Brian McGreal, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a couple of points. First of all, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Croon that the, what you're going to find, I believe, when you go to town council, which you will, is the, is the MR, MR district doesn't mean a thing in this whole scheme of things of what, what's been presented or proposed. I think you're going to find that potentially what you're going to find, and I do think you're going to find what, what Bill has proposed with the article. I think he's working on the current bylaw to Bill's defense. I do. I think where he's plugging in works with the new bylaw. That's where it would go, as Mr. Croon pointed out. So I don't think there's a lot of confusion on the bylaw that you'll find when you talk to town council. I think it might just be that, that Bill used the term acres versus square feet. And, you know, but, but you'll find that out. But, you know, to Bill's defense, I don't think he's working on the wrong bylaw. Or I think, I think, I think at the end of the day, it fits in the scheme of the current bylaw. And I think you'll find that from town council. And Mr. Lowery pointed out astutely that when you're dealing with the Sheridan, it is, you can't just pull that out language wise because under the state law, there's a uniformity requirement for zoning. You can't give properties in a district special treatment. They have to be uniform, but, but I think it could be dealt with other ways. So again, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist. I think it can be dealt with. But when you talk to Tom about that, you might want to mention, you know, is there a concern for uniformity on that property? In the other aspects that, you know, I'd like to just jump on what Mr. Connolly referred to is that, you know, there are ongoing discussions with the property owner at 200. And I know they're very appreciative of that, of that and the developer and, and of the friends welcoming that and participating in that. And thank you to them. And what I'm going to try to do is there's other property owners involved here. You have the Lakeside Office Park and you have the BO property. And, you know, if the friends are open, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to bring those folks into some discussions. Because they're good people and, you know, they're kind of sitting out in left field. And, you know, I think when, when everybody looks at this and when it's looked at as a town, one of the things that we need to be careful of is I'm going to bring up the, if I may, this might be.
What are you bringing up?
I want to bring up the, the use table of our bylaw.
Right.
Because sometimes, you know, you're talking about, Mr. Lowery's talking about what's the proper density and what works. And, you know, one of the things that we all need to be cognizant about is, is unintended consequences. So, you know, maybe on these properties, if you have what everyone might deem to be the right number, a residential use is a better use. But if it's not a practical use, it could drive these properties into other uses that would not be so desirable to the town. And, you know, so if you look at the business uses and you look at limited business, you can have a retail store, a service establishment, you would need a special permit, just like housing, but that's allowed in the, in that district.
Right.
You know, I don't think folks would be crazy about, you know, you know, a Lowe's being somewhere up there. Retail or restaurant use, drive-in retail service establishments, restaurants, offices are here. So I would just encourage you to look at this, you know, hotels are allowed also, you know, so, you know, that is already a hotel. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out in, in, you know, I am, Bill, if you don't mind, I'm going to try to, to bring those other folks in to, to, to say hello and to, you know, I don't think it hurts for them to start some dialogue. I think that might be positive for everybody.
No, I agree, Mr. McGreal. It would, it would be positive and we'd like to participate to the extent we can.
And I think you are working under the current bylaw, Bill. I don't, I don't think you made any mistake with that. So.
Well, it was, you know, it could, could, could have happened, but I appreciate that.
Yep.
But I, I think, well, I think we're finding out some, you know, some actions on the town to perhaps make sure there's no discrepancies out there in the bylaws or some, even the written that can be a little bit confusing. But, and Mr. Mullen, I still would support the board, going back to Mr. Mullen. But let's, let's continue dialoguing on this and, and get everybody involved, all the stakeholders, potential stakeholders, I guess. And I'll, I guess we'll rely on you, Mr. McGreal, to set something up and be in contact.
I, you're already in contact with the folks on 200, but I will want.
We are, but we're extending something, you know, we have to, we work with our board, of course. But, you know, I think we, we would be, we have to date that, you know, been in many, many meetings and many, many discussions and spent a lot of time on this and we will continue. So we'd welcome it.
I mean, they're good people. They're, you know, the, where my office park is, you know, the family that's involved in that property has a long history in Wakefield and, and they're, you know, they, they have a vested interest too. And, and I think they would really enjoy talking with you. So I'm happy to try to facilitate that. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Thank you, Mr. McGreal. Is it possible that with this article number two, moving forward, this is, it came up in the last, it's the last thing on my notes to discuss. It was, it came up in both meetings that we had, the public hearing and the, the one before, the public hearing and the one before that. Is it possible that you would want to bring this up and have a special town meeting for this article?
No, we don't think that's in the best interest of the town. During the pandemic, there's not real support for that on our board. The cost is not insignificant. We, we're not planning calling or requesting a special town meeting to accommodate this article.
Thank you. That was the last thing on my checklist tonight for this public hearing. Just want to see if anybody on the board has any other comments or questions. Well, we won't be closing this public hearing. It's still open. And we'll continue at, at a future date that will be noted in our agenda. And unlike we, at the last meeting, I have, there's a hand up for Mr. Tam. Go ahead, Mr. Tam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just by way of clarification, and I'm reluctant to interject into your process here and the efforts that the Friends of the Lake have been making. I've been taking notes and I represent Cabot, Cabot and Forbes. And I think we appreciate the input from both the organization and the planning board. But clearly, there has always been an interest and a desire to engage with Friends of the Lake. And that was how this all started. And I think Jay's statements and indications are that those conversations will continue. I'm not clear at this stage. And I, I know this bylaw, maybe not as well as, as some of you, but I know this bylaw pretty well. Why this public hearing on what are flawed zoning articles would remain open? Particularly if there's no interest in a special town meeting. Frankly, the conversations and the enthusiasm that the organization has and the developer is committed to continuing should continue. And, but I don't know if the energy and effort of everyone that's on this meeting and the time and resources devoted to town staff is really warranted. I asked that question of you. I don't make a judgment on it, but having, having a, a public hearing on, on a zoning article stay open indefinitely is a problem. It needs to be continued to a date and time certain. And I think based on what I'm hearing, if, if, if a zoning article and a downzoning is going to be advanced, it's going to be potentially quite different from the article before you. I guess my observation would be that there should be some consideration to closing the public hearing and, and, and continuing to study this. But the commitment is there that we will continue to engage with, with, with the Friends of the Lake. And, and that commitment is real. So, but I, if you are going to continue it, it certainly needs to be to a date and time certain.
Thank you. I know at the, one of our agenda items this evening is to set our future meeting dates. And I believe we'll discuss it at that point. To see how we have, as you know, tonight, we have, the preliminary subdivision plans are also on the agenda. But as far as closing public hearing, only to open it up again in maybe three weeks to have the article worded correctly and placed on the future town warrant. I don't, I think that's a waste of our town resources where we have to post a public hearing in the paper twice again. I would like at this point to keep it, keep the public hearing open. And we'll hear from the board as well to see, to plan for a future meeting, meaning is it the first week in December, our first meeting in December, that we do have the information back to get the wording correct with input from town council, to make sure it's really where it needs to be, whether it's number of units or square footage, which is the part I've been harping on since the beginning. It just needs to be clear. It needs to be clear on that part. That's, that's all I really want it to be. So it's not misunderstood. But thanks for your comments, Mr. Tam.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a suggestion that we continue public hearing till our first meeting in January 2021. That way, due to the holidays, it'll give plenty of time for any of these details to be worked out. And perhaps this, this article can be refined a little bit more. It looks like the, the next time we would be bringing this up at town meeting would be spring town meeting. So there's plenty of time. There's no need to rush it to, into December. So.
Understood.
That would be my suggestion.
That's a good suggestion. And like I mentioned, it was something I'd like to discuss when we got to it, but that's, I think this is good. That would be, and please correct me, Susan, if you're keeping track there, that would be January 12th, 2021. That's the second Tuesday. Matt, I think that's a good proposal. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions about continuing the public hearing to that date? Okay, I'd also like to discuss with the board, would like to meet with Tom Mullen, Town Council, to review this. I'd like to volunteer to do that. But I think we should have another member from the board as well present and also invite Mr. Connolly. And if anybody else wants to be in that meeting, just to discuss, to make sure it's on the right path. I'd like to keep the meeting small, but it would be good to make sure Mr. Mullen hears it from a few different directions.
I, I still think we need to refine the, the article a little bit more. But, you know, if you want to send it to, I don't know if you need to have a meeting with, with Tom Mullen, but, you know, if you want to refer to him after either, if, if this is what the proponent wants to move forward to have him send this, or if it's going to be changed, then have it changed and sent to him. But I don't know if we need to have a meeting where we. have it changed and sent to him, but I don't know if we need to have a meeting where we, where we work out what the proponent's article says.
I guess it would be reviewing to making sure the wording is, is correct now, and if any of it has to change regarding the, number of units versus the square footage. I know I'm still stuck on that, and I really feel that's where it, it just needs to be right on. There are, there are two hands up. Mr. Mitchell and then Mr. Cron.
Yeah, just briefly, if you do talk to Tom Mullen, I, I have no dog in this fight. I think there is a, a number of days the planning board has to vote on this, or else it's effectively affirmed. I may want to verify that date. It's master law.
For a public hearing for an article?
No, yeah, for you to vote on. You can't, you can't take 10 years to vote on the article. There's a day limit. So I, I would just, if you don't know what it is, I would suggest you, you ask Tom Mullen that. I do not know the number, but I know there is a limit and you might be bumping up against it, so I have no dog in that fight, but just want to bring attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christopher Cron, 114 Main Street. I, I was simply gonna, request to be involved with the meeting with, with County Council, and respectfully, I think it's a great idea to, to see if there are issues that we can work out with, with the zoning board and with Council President.
I was hoping you would. That's why I brought it up.
Thank you. I appreciate the suggestion.
All right. Attorney McGreal, last time, last one for this.
Well, if there's going to be a meeting with Town Council as, as part of the property owners, I might want to be involved in that too, and perhaps potentially Mr. Tam and also, Ms. Moynihan, who represents one of the property owners also.
I, I think it's, sorry to interrupt, but I, in all respect, I think it's really to, just to get the wording right, to make sure it doesn't cross any of the, current zoning bylaws, to make sure it, it is reading the right information, and then bring it back to this public hearing, knowing that it's been okayed and checked by Town Council, so we can discuss and vote to recommend or not.
Well, I, I understand, but I, you know, with all due respect, I don't think you would want to forego any of the specific property owners.
Right.
To be having a meeting that they're not invited to.
Okay.
I don't think that, you can talk to Tom about that, but I don't think that that would be appropriate, with all due respect.
Point taken, and I'll send an email to Mr. Mullen and ask his opinion on how he wants to handle this. With the article, with moving forward, how does he want the meeting to be? And if there is a meeting, I'll make sure that, the invite list includes the owners of the property, Mr. Cron, and, Friends of Lake Quantapowhat. I think I have the pretty good list there.
And if you need somebody else from the planning board, Phil? I'm happy to be there.
And then the only other point I wanted to make with, with Bob's point, my reading of the statute is that you have to open the hearing within 65 days of receiving it, which you've done.
Yes.
And then the only other time limit that I can see is that, once you make the recommendation, it, I, I don't think there's any time limit, I should say, for you to close.
Right. It's, it was the 65 days that we have to hear it.
Yeah, there's no time limit on how long you, you can take.
And I think the other, the only other thing I could find is that we have to have our report in, to the Town Council before town meeting, and it doesn't say how many days before town meeting.
No, the only other time limit you have is, is that you have to make a recommendation before town meeting and, or town meeting can't vote on it unless you've closed the public hearing and 21 days have gone by.
Yes.
Out of recommendation, and then a meeting could, could vote on it.
Right.
I don't think that is an issue, but I just.
I don't think so either. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Last person on this, Mr. Carl D.
Yes, Carl Dunlap, 18 King Street. I just want to clarify, when we keep talking about owners of the property, in the past, we've heard, you know, attorneys here representing people have a purchase and sales agreement versus not being an owner, so I just want to clarify who, who are actually owners and invited, because they have, you know, three or four attorneys representing owners, and I know there are current owners of some of those properties, but there's also, a purchase and sales agreement. It's, doesn't necessarily mean they're an owner.
It's a good point, and sorry if I misuse the owners, as opposed to owners' representation or future owners' representation. I, it is a good point, and I'm not sure how to address it, except that if we do end up having a meeting with Town Council, we'll make sure, the people that are current owners of the property and representing future owners of the company, will be invited if that's the, the course or the path that Mr. Mullen wants to take for an initial review of the article.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. With that, we'll keep public hearing open and we don't have to vote on this. We'll, we'll just put it on the agenda for January 12th. Thank you, everybody. And let me just move on to, see if I have the article up still. I do have the agenda still up. So the next item on tonight's agenda is item number four, preliminary subdivision plan for 50 Quantapowhat Parkway. Attorney McGreal, is this, is this you?
It's me, and it's Attorney Carla Moynihan, who I think is on voice. I see her on the screen. Carla, are you there? She's here, but maybe she hasn't had, Carla Moynihan? That's okay. I can proceed without her. She can pop on if she's able to.
Right, let me just.
Anytime. And John Oren is here also. So this is a, it's not, again, not a public hearing. It's a continued meeting on a preliminary subdivision plan. We were seeking input and we have respect to, which I think we, we presented at the last meeting. And we're happy to put the plan up again if you'd like, but in any event, I don't think the board had any, significant comments or issues, whether it's a pretty straightforward preliminary plan, and we have respectfully requested approval, which as I stated, that being, at the end of the day, it really has no impact on the zoning freeze, whether you approve it, disapprove it, don't do anything. The, the zoning freeze is triggered by the filing of the plan, not the approval. Preliminary plans are really just for discussion purposes with the applicant and the board. So we respected, respectfully requested approval because there were no issues with it, and I think the board decided just to keep it open for one more meeting.
Yes.
That you are prerogative. So would you like us to bring the plan up, Mr. Chair? Would that be helpful?
Not unless there's any questions from our board. No, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Anybody on our, from the board have any comments or questions about the preliminary subdivision, subdivision plan for 50 Quantapowhat Parkway?
In the past, with these preliminary plans, many times we have not made a, favorable or unfavorable recommendation. We've just, you know, let it go. Are you looking for favorable or unfavorable, Attorney McGreal?
Yeah, we would request that. I mean, you know, the, the statute references that. You've done that in the past. I, I don't think there's a major issue with that, but, whatever that, whatever that decision is, we would respectfully request a decision. We think it's a pretty straightforward preliminary subdivision plan, that easily meets the requirement, so it deserves an approval.
And I know with our discussion in our last meeting, I have no problem, if, if we want to propose a motion, to accept, the preliminary subdivision plan for Quantapowhat, 50 Quantapowhat Parkway this evening. Any comments from other members of the board? Does anybody want to make a motion that might help to bring the plan up so we can make a proper motion? Just because of the date and the, the wording. And I have it if you don't, because now they're on the town website, which is excellent to have.
Oh, John's here. John, can you bring it up?
Okay.
Do you want it right now?
Thank you.
You see that?
I can see it.
You'll blow it up, John.
Any more interested in the title?
Yes, to read the date, just to make sure everything's in order. The date was from October 20th, 2020. Is that the same as the stamp date? It looks, looks like it.
Mr. Chairman, just, just, you know, I, I am not going to make a recommendation to favorably approve this, so if you're looking for me to make that recommendation, it's not going to happen.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board want to make a, a motion to accept the preliminary plan for Road A, Wakefield, Massachusetts, dated October 20th, 2020, by Hays Engineering for the property at 50 Quantapowhat Parkway in Wakefield, Massachusetts?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second on that?
All right, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. One, two.
The chairman, could I request a roll call vote, just so we can see who's voting?
Okay, roll call for the planning board. Matt Lowry?
No, not in favor.
Yours? Okay.
I'm, I'm voting against.
Okay, I think you were just looking for a roll call to see who's here. Is that?
No, I took a roll call vote. That's what I was requesting.
All right, sorry, my misunderstanding. So Matt Lowry is against. Okay. Megan Menasali?
Aye, in favor.
Okay. Bill DiAmore?
Against.
Against? Okay. Joey Anne Schooler?
I'm gonna abstain.
And I'll, I vote in, in favor. So this hasn't happened in my, experience before on the planning board. What happens when it's two and two?
I don't think it passes. I, I don't think, I don't, I think it's, you're in, you're in, you're in, open water, right?
Okay.
So, you know, I, I think that, then I think what you would do is you would just reference a decision that there was.
No decision.
That there was, basically that there was a, it was a split vote, right? Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. I, and I, I don't want to make a big deal of it, because I know this is really.
No, we don't, I don't either. You know, that's why, but I, I don't think there's an argument to be made that it passes with a two-two vote, but it, it's not defeated either, so I think it.
Okay.
You would just, you know, write a, a simple decision that the board voted and they were.
All right, thanks for the.
Does that make sense, Mr. Chair?
It does. It's new to me.
Carla, are you there? I don't know if Carla's here. She's here, but she's not. She must be having a.
No, I'm, I'm just concerned that.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hi, Carla.
Sorry, I'm here. I'm driving, and I just pulled over on the highway. I apologize.
So, so what happened?
I'm a working mom.
So what happened, Carla, is, you know, they, they voted on the preliminary plan and, and there's one abstention, and then there's two in favor and two oppose, so, you know, my take on that is it, it's just kind of a split, in that they would just file a decision saying that they, they voted and it was, it was a split, split decision, just to.
Okay.
And I'm glad you did the roll call, because that's actually prescribed by statute, so, thank you.
Good. Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, Mr. Chair.
All right, thanks.
So it'll be pretty, pretty simple and straightforward. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board members.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carla.
The next item on tonight's agenda, number five, preliminary subdivision plan for 200 Quantapowhat Parkway.
Okay. So, is Tim Williams here? I don't know if Tim's here. If not, I can bring up the plan. Would you like that plan up, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Need for that?
I believe so.
Okay.
To have any questions to discuss it, and if we do end up.
Peter's here too, so I can, I can bring that up. I think I could do that through your website. Does that make sense?
Brian?
Let me just get to, yes. Hello?
Paul Matos from A&amp;M.
Oh. I've already got it. So we do have someone from A&amp;M, but I can, I can bring it up, Matt. I didn't know you were there. Thank you. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Great. Which page would you like?
The cover page is fine. From the board to review any of the information. I know, again, from a previous meeting that we did review, and there were more questions on this one than the last one, just understanding, water runoff, what's currently happening there. I don't know if there are any other questions from the board. Doesn't seem to be. Attorney McGreal, or the other representative, is there anything you want to add or any questions, comments for the board?
I'll defer to Peter. Peter, are you there?
I am. My, no, simply, I think, similar to the, the last plan, and as, has been discussed with the board, as a preliminary plan, it's simply a, a division of land into two or more building lots. This is a plan that complies with, your own subdivision rules and regulations, and, so the, the options before the board are, to approve it as is, or with suggested modifications, or to disapprove it, and if you disapprove it, you must state reasons for, disapproval in accordance with, chapter 41, as to why it doesn't comport with your rules and regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Tam. Is that something that's required to do on the spot, or is it something that needs a report?
Well, both. I mean, you would have to, when you vote, you would have to make findings of why, why it was disapproved, and that would have to be in your decision.
Okay. Fair enough. Any comments from the board?
And, and the reason for that, Mr. Chair, is because this will be followed up with a definitive plan months later, and if, if there is an issue, then the applicant needs, it needs an opportunity to, to, to address that, with the definitive filing.
Understood.
Well, I'll, I'll comment on this. I'm gonna not favorably approve this either, and mostly for the reason is, you're, you're building two, or you're, you're creating two non-billable lots, so there's really no reason to have this subdivision in the first place. I understand you want to put a road in, but that can be done with an A&R plan at this point, so, the, the burden on, on the, on the area with putting a road in for basically gratuitous purposes is, is not really worth it, so that's why I'm going to vote against it. And basically, just to back up for the last one, same thing, there was no reason to have a road built on that. The subdivision could have been done with the, an A&R, so, just so, the reason why I didn't vote favorably on the last one is for that reason.
Matt, just to be clear, we accepted the, we endorsed the A&R.
Correct.
Right.
But this is, this is proposing a subdivision.
Correct.
Which is different than A&R.
Right, so. All right.
And this one, you're creating, you're creating two lots that are basically all wetlands, so they can't be built on.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you want me to respond, I, I certainly can. I, I can appreciate, Mr. Lowry's comment, and, in this case, this is an alternative to an A&R. It's a different plan. There are three lots. We're entitled to, apportion the property in accordance with your subdivision rules and regulations, and we can do it for, for this purpose, and we can do it, for no purpose, if it accomplishes the goals and the rules and regulations. So, a, a disapproval really does need to identify. reasons under chapter 41, section 81U.
Thank you, Mr. Tim.
And i- if this is a definitive plan that comes before us and it meets all the requirements, then we'll sign it. But at this point, I'm choosing not, in, in the past, we have not made a decision at all on a lot of preliminary subdivision plans, so, you know. I am, that's, that's my reason for rejecting this.
Thank you, Matt. Then I, I, I was thinking back in the, I looked at back two years ago when we had two or three subdivision plans, preliminary subdivision plans, I couldn't find that we ruled on them either, so that's fine, we, I think we should still move forward with a motion to accept or not accept the preliminary subdivision plan for 200 Quantapower Parkway in Wakefield, Mass. And is there a date on this plan, if you can scroll down?
October 21.
Issued to our planning board on October 21st, 2020 by Allen and Major Associates, Inc.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve this preliminary subdivision plan.
Thank you. So let's go to a roll call. Joanne Schooler, will you be abstaining or are you part of this?
I'm gonna vote no for the same reasons as Matt Lowry. Two non-buildable lots. I know people that picked blueberries there.
Okay, thank you. Megan Menasali, you voted in favor, okay, so. Bill?
Not in favor for the same reasons Matt.
Okay. Matt, you got your answer?
No.
Nope. And I am voting in favor. So this one does not, is not approved. And the reason to state for under chapter 41 would be the majority of the planning board does not see a reason for building a road where proposed subdivided lots are not buildable or non-buildable lots, buildable lots. Matt, I don't know if you want to rephrase that, but that's close.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on tonight's agenda, item number six, preliminary subdivision plan for 591, 595, 599 and 607 North Avenue.
On behalf of that applicant, Mr. Ogren, Mr. Chair, John, could you?
Please proceed.
Take the honors and put that up, please?
Yeah. Any questions or comments from our planning board? And I know in the last meeting, we, same thing, we really didn't have any on this area. We did talk about the river stream that runs across the property on the opposite side of North Ave and that does continue, but it, it does split from what we understand. It does not continue down Willard Road, but it dumps into the Culverton town drainage. So it's not an open stream, it's an open stream on one side of North Ave, but as it crosses, it goes underground and what we discussed was out to the triangle at the end of Willard, at Willard Road. Where it looks like there's a filtering system there. I, I believe that's what we spoke mostly about, there were some other comments, but does anybody on the board have other comments about this preliminary subdivision plan on?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, as in the past, it's, this is not a public hearing, but we would take input from others and I see a couple of people have hands up, so we may want to just recognize and see if they have limited comments on the plan that's presented.
Thank you for pointing that out, for some reason that went to full screen, I, okay, I have the participants back, thank you. Yeah, sorry about that, I lost track of the participants there. Before we go to public, any planning board members have any comments? Okay. Mr. Mattos, if you'd like to unmute?
I was just here for the previous meeting, I was representing Allen and Major Associates, so.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Thank you, yep. Ms. Elavobi, if you would like to unmute and speak? Okay, I don't, I don't hear anything. Brown, and you're still muted?
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, okay, I just want, I just look down, yep.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just real quick, from, from the board. What is the intent of sub, subdividing the, the properties? Particularly the 200 Quantapower Parkway since two are, are apparently a non-buildable? What's, what's the purpose of doing it?
If I can, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's the owner's right to do it, so they, they propose it. You know, we don't have to question or actually like what they want to do, it's their right to do it, so they're doing it.
Well, I'm not questioning their right to do it, I'm, I'm asking just in, in general. Why do people subdivide?
Well, not to go too basic on it, but you have a piece of land that's a certain size.
Right.
Following the guidelines, they can, the piece of property can be broken up into smaller pieces, which makes the property more valuable because you can sell off those pieces or you can choose to build on those pieces and then sell it off. So I think from a development point of view, and I think this is what you want to hear, that makes the property more valuable because you can divide it, build on it, sell it as separate properties. And I'm just going on the basic developer side, if anybody from the board wants to dispute or enhance that, that's fine.
Okay, well, thank you, that's, that's a good basic answer, I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Cron?
Thank you. Christopher Cron from 114 Main Street. It would seem to me, Chairman, that the various subdivisions may make it more difficult to create a overarching plan for this area with the potential of, as you say, additional owners splitting up the land may make it more difficult to create this uniform plan that I think the town really needs to focus on and put in place before we start approving these plans to subdivide and create a smaller parcels that then create potential additional owners that we have to to coordinate with in order to create that plan.
I, I agree with that and what I also feel as a planning board, if their subdivision plans, preliminary plans, meet the state laws and regulations, there's I can't see how I could vote against it and once it goes to a when it becomes further developed as a definitive plan, I feel we have more to discuss regarding the plan. The, the preliminary subdivision plan, when it came in as an A&amp;R, is when that was endorsed, that's when this set those lines. It's not this plan that's setting the lines, as far as I understand, it was the A&amp;R plan that we endorsed.
Mr. Chairman, that, that I can't particularly speak to in terms of, I, I wasn't involved with the A&amp;R process. You know, I, I just, you know, would emphasize that, you know, as, as, as part of the planning board and, and this is something I know that you take great passion in, in terms of kind of creating a plan for this area and that's something that, that really deserves the input of the entire town, that's something we all live with. And, and being able to, I think, develop that plan first in the first instance and have an idea of what is it that the townspeople would like to see come into this, to this area and, and how do we want to see it developed and to, to a unified idea? Having that discussion first in advance of, of creating these additional subdivisions, to me, makes sense. You know, I, I can't speak to the exact, you know, procedure as to, you know, what you can and can't do. It seems that, that potentially holding this open is something that has been thrown around. I don't know what the impact of that is, but I'd encourage you to perhaps consider it.
Thank you. And I know it sounds discouraging, joining the planning board and my passion for this with the town of Wakefield and trying to understand and make it more walkable. Part of it is, I am, I'm, I'm really concerned with how much power our board does not have. The ZBA, excuse me, the ZBA really has the power in what these properties look like. Unfortunately, as a board, we don't have a lot of power in that and it's, it's tough. And I know this was a change that happened before I was on the board and I know I've heard different stories about why it happened and how it happened, but now with the way this town is set up with what the planning board, with our powers and with the ZBA with their powers, it really, the look, the feel, the building, what goes there, all that is, is through the ZBA meetings. Attorney McGreal, you have your hand up?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah, I, I'd just like to address that, what Mr. Mr. Kruen just stated. So when, when you file zoning bylaw changes, sometimes they have unintended consequences. And this property is probably the prime example because this property is subject to the zoning change and life is going on at this property. They're actually re-roofing the buildings now, my offices and they're making improvements to the property. But certainly the owner of the property is not going to stand by when a zoning change happens and allow their rights to be taken away on their property. So, you know, perhaps with this property owner, discussion should have been had before the zoning article was filed that would affect them. So they're reacting, they're not like saying, hey, I'm gonna, I want to do this, they're forced to do this to protect their rights. So I, you know, I don't see tonight, through the hearing process, that the zoning bylaw change is, is not going for, perhaps someone will want to remove this property from the bylaw change and the person won't want to proceed with this. But in any event, what you're seeing, you know, with the subdivision, it's, and I think the board knows this, it's not a discretionary process. The statute is clear, if, if the property meets the rules and regulations that are implemented for subdivision control, then the planning board doesn't have a choice, they have to approve the plan. And this plan does that and, and, you know, very easily. And, and, and you, you know, the board knows their duty, they're required to do it. And, and I will say to the public, it doesn't mean that these lots are going to be implemented in the future. They don't have to be. So as I discussed earlier with Mr. Conley, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this property owner in, I want him to meet the, the relevant folks and the, and the, and the friends of the lake and start, and start some discussions with them on this property. I think they'll be pleasantly surprised that the, that the the attitude that this particular property owner has and that all the property owner, owners have. And I think those will be good discussions. So I, I don't want anyone to panic and see these lots being divided and say, oh, this is going to make things difficult because at the end of the day, these lots don't have to be implemented and used in the fashion that they might be approved by the planning board. They could be and they might be, but they don't have to be. If that helps.
Thank you, Attorney McGreal. Any other comments from our board or from the public? Thank you, thank you for the, the conversation and the, the input too. Let's see. John, if you can zoom in on that bottom right of the plan, please? Thanks. So again, the preliminary subdivision plan. Let's see. This Attorney McGreal, is this just listed as Babbitt Street or is it, does it need to read the specific?
No, just Babbitt Street, that's the entitlement of the preliminary plan.
Yes, Babbitt, okay, all right, thanks. The planning board will accept the preliminary plan for Babbitt Street, Wakefield, Mass. by Hayes Engineering dated October 20th, 2020.
So moved to accept this preliminary plan.
Thank you, Megan. There's a roll call. Joanne?
I'll second it first.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Matt?
It's a point of order, it's actually should be to approve the preliminary plan, not to accept it.
I'm sorry, thank you. Approved.
My apologies.
Not accept, thank you. I think I misled you, sorry, Megan, I said accept for the one before. To approve. Joanne?
I'm, I'm gonna abstain again because I was not in on the discussion on this in the last meeting.
Okay. And Megan?
Aye, approved.
Yep. Bill DiAmore?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, Matt?
And I will approve this one, this, this has a little more legitimate seat to it and so, yes, I'm gonna approve.
Thank you, I also approve. And that would be out of four members voting for approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Before we move on to item number seven, does anybody on the board need a short break? Just wanted to see.
Are you talking like weeks break or you?
I'm talking like, get some water or go to the bathroom.
Let's just get this done, so.
Well, okay, that's Matt, anybody on the board need to take a quick break? All right. Thank you. Item number seven, Glen Dale Ave, Ossepe Lane, set surety. Attorney McGreal?
Yes, we are here to set the surety for Ossepe Lane, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I believe you got a recommendation from the town engineer?
Oh, that, that's, that's right, I'm sorry, I did receive a recommendation from the town engineer. Do you happen to have that handy?
I'm looking for that and I can't find it.
I know, I, I closed my mail. I am. I know by mistake, I closed my email down. In the town planning board, there we go. It comes up sometime as a bad request, it's happening again where I can't get into it.
Did you find it?
Nope, I'm not able to get into it, I apologize. I'll try again. Nope, it just keeps coming up as a bad request.
Okay, hang on. It's gonna take me a minute. Is there anything else you want to go on to while I look for this? Are there other things you need to do?
Well, I already suggested a break, but that's not. Let's see. I'm gonna stop the share.
I think, I think, I wonder if Susan has it, Susan, do you potentially have that?
Susan's saying she does have it.
Oh, great.
She's nodding. Do you want to share your screen, Susan? No. You're on mute, so we can't hear you. You're on mute, so we can't hear you.
I just emailed it to you and Brian.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure I did.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
I can bring that up now. Thank you, Susan.
Please. Nice to see you, Mr. Hannigan.
Hello, Bill, hello, Bill.
Hi, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, Brian.
I've biked by the property a few times, it's it's getting there.
Yeah, that's the reason I'm on on the call, just to let everyone know what a fantastic job.
Yeah, and also Joe Serenello was involved too. He's on, he's on the Zoom and and he's, he's acquired the property from Mr. Hannigan and 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 I think Matt Lowry has been, you know, as a board member, has been very helpful to to keep going down and and working with them on on the on the site. And I think, as you mentioned, it's really coming along. So so much so, to refresh the board's memory, there's actually, there's two sureties on this subdivision, there's one for the Glendale side, then there's one to the Osipee side. So Joe has not started the Glendale side yet officially, so there's no request for surety change on the Glendale side, only the Osipee side. And he'll be back on the Glendale side once he proceeds and starts doing the roadway work down there. And so he has got an estimate from the town engineer of $25,000 for surety.
Now, would this be combined with, like, say, for example, would Glendale also be 25,000?
No, that will be determined on its own.
Okay, and that's.
This subdivision has two Form G covenants. One, you know, so basically, if I may, Mr. Chair, because it might be helpful for some new members of the board.
Please do.
So basically, when a subdivision is approved, the thing that the planning board is concerned about under the statute is is what if the developer doesn't finish the roadway and just walks away after selling all of the houses? And doesn't install all the roadway and drainage. So when the subdivision is approved, traditionally, at the time of approval, the owner will give a Form G covenant. And what the Form G covenant says is, you're signing the plan and we're gonna record it, but everybody in the world beware that you cannot get a building permit or an occupancy permit until one of, till two things happen. One, that the pavement has been put down, the rough binder. And two, that there's been a separate surety put in place to guarantee that the remaining work will be done. So if the developer walks away, the town has enough money to finish the project. And once that's in place, that also releases the Form G covenant. And so now you can pull building permits and build houses and get occupancy permits. So we initially filed the Form G covenant to secure the Osipee side, we had a Form G covenant for the Glendale side. And as I said, we're only seeking to put separate surety on the Osipee side and release the Form G covenant on that side. The Form G covenant will remain in place on the Glendale side and will be back on that at a later date, once Joe starts proceeding with that.
Thank you for the explanation. So this is for the 20, 25,000 for the Osipee side.
Correct.
Is there anything keeping this from moving forward or do we have to wait for the Glendale? I I don't remember it being split into two like this before.
No, because this is kind of unique because you have two separate streets on two different sides, right? I mean, they're kind of like, you know, two little separate subdivisions. So Joe, can you give the board an update on where you are with Glendale? Would that be helpful, Mr. Chair?
It will be, it just, I want to understand, it's, will this keep Joe from building or receiving a building permit for the Glendale side?
Yes, it will, you won't, yeah, you won't be able to receive a building permit for the Glendale side till he comes back to your board.
No, but meaning does it before, until the Osipee side is also back?
No, the Osipee side probably won't come back because we're bonding that now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but Joe, it might be helpful if you explain where you are time wise and.
Yep.
Could you?
Yes, on the Osipee side, we what you see there as far as what between us and the engineer, town engineer has figured out is a top coat on the road. The granite curtain. Everything else as far as the sewer. We upgraded to from four inch to eight inch with a with a brand new manhole. And the water line has been installed. So that's all done and we are looking to get the bond amount accepted so that we can proceed with building permits on what we have now is number two and number four Osipee. And Glendale, we're not intended to do anything there most likely till the spring.
Okay.
And at that time, you know, we'll we'll handle that, as Brian has been saying separately. And hopefully, you know, like I said, the early, early spring. And I think we have to go for an extended variance on that too, as far as I understand with Brian.
Probably not anymore, Joe, because the COVID-19 is this tolling statute now, which which
We won't have to comment.
Probably won't, yeah, so we'll talk about that.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation, Joe. Matt, do you have anything to report on this or any comments?
No. It's been a while since we went out there and reviewed the trees, there were a couple of trees that we that were deemed a hazard once the canopy was exposed and they were actually overhanging one of the neighbors and they worked to to remove some of those. But they've been very conscientious about making sure that they're not going any further than what they agreed to with the board, so.
While we're on the trees with Matt, there is a couple of trees that we were, we saved, we were supposed to save and we did save. That a few of these windstorms since we cut the trees, I probably want to schedule with Matt sometime to come out again and look at them, the branches have broken off and it just now look like two dead trees, so I didn't want to touch them till I probably have you come back and take a look at them. So I'll schedule that with you as possible.
All right, that's fine. I know there was, I don't know if we had discussed this, but there was, there was one tree that we, that the board had decided or, you know, the board agreed that was going to be cut down. But after further review, I know we're, the developer and the engineer were working to save it, that was the one, one of the trees that when we had the conservation commission in, they were, they were concerned about and it looks like they were able to, I hope I'm not speaking out of
No, it's still there.
Yeah, you're able to save it, so.
So far.
No, thank you, Matt, thank you, Joe, I'm glad it's all working out. So I think that's enough information on this. Attorney McGrath, is there anything that we're missing before we go to a vote?
No, we'd just like you to accept the surety and just as with 107 prospect, I'll work out the 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 surety document with town council.
Matt, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept the surety as presented and that authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the board.
Thank you, second?
A second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Aye. Matt, Bill?
I'm gonna abstain from voting since I wasn't a member of the board during this development.
Thank you. Okay, note that the the board accepted the surety for 25,000, okay. Does the amount matter? Does that have to be logged into our meeting minutes? I'm not sure if it does, I think we just have to accept it.
Yeah, I think I I would, I would defer, but I would always, for the protection of the board, I would always state the amount.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking as this springtime and Osipee comes in, how it will also be part of it.
Oh, you mean, you mean Glendale?
I'm sorry, Glendale, yes, already, see that?
That's gonna be totally separate, that's just, that's all different work, right, Joe? That's totally independent. That's why we did separate bonds.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep. Thanks. Okay, next item on tonight's agenda, item number eight, review ZBA's ruling on Cherry Lane variance. So. And I know I distributed the message to the board during our last meeting. Our board ruled in favor to allow. Let me, let me just bring it up so I I get the wording right and everything. And then I know this was I don't want to use any bad language, but it's, it's really tough because we took the time to go through it. But as a board, the requirements and checking with town council, our vote is not that, was not valid, so. Mr. Lou presented to the ZBA. And his variance that was approved was rescinded due to engineered plans that were falsified and he is not allowed to, and this is for Zero Cherry Lane, he's not allowed to go back to the ZBA for variance for two years. And our board, our planning board can change that if we vote out of a five member board. If four members vote in favor. Mr. Lou can go back to the ZBA before the two years. So there's, there's a couple ways to look at this. And I know our board voted, but it it's, again, it's not valid. So tonight, we're not looking for a vote. Tonight, we're looking for a discussion to prepare for a future vote. And I just want us to have an open discussion about this and I'm sorry that whether I misunderstood or just there was, even town council wasn't sure and he had to go back and look at a certain case study. And with a five member board, four members need to vote in favor of allowing Mr. Lou to go back to the ZBA. So I just wanted to have a quick discussion just with our board to see how you all felt about that. And if it's something that we should take up as a vote again as a board. I know Joanne was not present at that meeting, but she is present at this meeting. And I know, Matt, you recused yourself from the vote and that's fine too. I just wanted to see if it was something that if our board, the four members that are voting members for this, if Matt still chooses to recuse himself. That if we all voted in favor. Mr. Lou would be able to go back to present, to apply for variance to the ZBA. It doesn't mean the the variance is awarded. It just means he's allowed to go back to the ZBA with the one variance for the distance from the stream to where he could build. And I know I just want to see, Bill Di Amore, I know you voted not in favor for him to go back, I just wanted to see if there was any change or any reason that you would change your mind before we decide to go and set up a meeting agenda and have another meeting to to do that.
No, there isn't anything that's gonna change my mind.
Okay, then, as as the chair, I respect that. Mr. Lowry, are you still intending to recuse yourself?
Yes, I'm gonna, I need to recuse myself on this.
Okay, thank you, I also respect that. So I don't think as a board, we need to have a discussion about this if we do not have enough members to vote in favor. So I will send an email and copy town council, Mr. Lou, that as a board, we we don't have the voting members to.
Mr. Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
Is it Mr. Lou? Yes, yes, I'm here. Yeah, so I I would just like to ask that you actually repeat to the board, the language of the law as to what they're voting on. So it's not so much that they're allowing me to go back, but the the language of the law is just asking if there is significant material change to the reasons why I lost my variances. And isn't that what you're voting on? Am I wrong in that?
We are voting to allow you to reapply for the zoning variance in in under the two years that you have to wait. And I apologize, I haven't been able to get into the planning board email since earlier this evening. Do you have that law that you could share your screen?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, if if it helps, yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I could do that.
Have power to share.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I know, I apologize again, I'm not sure why I can't get into the.
Yeah, so I'll just quote what I sent you.
Yes, please. And Mr. Lou, just so you know, the board was updated with what Tom Holland Town Council shared through email, I did forward it to the board members.
Yep. Okay.
And thank you for being patient after all the other agenda items.
No, I I understand the process. Yep. Let's see if I can find it. Okay, I think I have it. Okay, so I'm gonna share.
Yep, please do.
Okay, so there it is.
If you can zoom in, please.
Okay. I
If you hold down control and roll your wheel forward on your mouse.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is a, this editor that I I use to clip out the actual little wording of the law. Okay, so, I mean, I can read it, it says at the public meeting, it is assumed that the planning board would consider whether the appellant or petitioner has submitted sufficient information that could lead to a finding that there has been a specific material change in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based.
Right. Okay.
So
Go ahead.
So I'll, yeah, go ahead, sorry, my bad.
No, that's all right, go ahead, proceed.
Yeah, so so if we agree that the the condition which caused the rescinding of the variances was that they felt that the the plan was not properly stamped and yeah, I I hate to use the word falsified because I I really don't feel that I falsified it, but anyways. I, but so the reason why they rescinded it was they, it wasn't a properly stamped plan. Okay, and 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 my argument is that in the, if I was allowed to go back, I would present to them a fully signed and stamped plan from a different surveyor, so the conditions are totally different.
I understand. I appreciate you taking the time to explain that and I know as a professional, as a registered architect with a stamp. I really, really, what scares me the most is someone taking one of my drawings that I stamped and changing the date or adding more information to it, whether it's an approved zoning chart or any information, it is just illegal. I overlook that for this case because I did read through everything and I do understand there was a lot more going on and that you did zoom in, but you did add information to it and you changed the date and it was still the stamp of the surveyor with the signature. And and that's something that is, it's a big deal.
No, I I understand.
Before you speak, and even with all that, after reading through the information, I did feel that you do deserve to go back to the zoning board of appeals. Before you speak, and even with all that, after reading through the information, I did feel that you do deserve to go back to the zoning board of appeals to re-present your, reapply for variance. So I don't know if anybody on board has any other comments, but I'm not sure what else we could do as a board if we do not have four members in the favor of voting for this.
Hear me?
Yes, hi, Joanne.
Hi. I read over the material also. And it seemed to me that there was reason to go back. I did have some questions about it, like why he was going back for one variance. Three required initially. And there's only one for the stream.
Right. Well, there was a front setback that because of the, Mr. Lou changed the, the layout of the house to be a little bit more compact and there was some redesigning of what it would do. So he didn't, and Mr. Lou, please correct me. But there was no reason for the front setback any longer or the height.
Yeah, initially I wanted to be mindful of the stream, more of the stream. And I felt that, you know, if I'm going to go into the ZBA, you know, I could ask for the reduction in the front, but it's the honest, it just caused me more problems and and, and then I redesigned the house from a three-story to a two-story so that I wouldn't need a three-story variance. And I just wanted to make the process much more streamlined. I, yeah.
I, I think a two-story is better than a three-story.
I agree. I agree. And initially I had wanted a two-story, but once again, working with conservation, it was one of the concessions that I, I gave them was that, you know, a, a two-story with, I mean, a three-story with no basement is less impactful on the land. And that was a concession that I had made. I definitely would prefer a two-story for sure.
Thank you, Joanne.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Lou.
In terms of the condition changing, if you had changed the plans without getting the proper stamp on it previously, what would you be doing differently? If you were to go before them again?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I have obtained a new, a new surveyor and I have the new planner already. And yeah, and, and, yeah, it's, it's new plan, new surveyor. And I, I I, I don't, I don't want to harp on it, but you know, I had a working relationship with the surveyor where I was in essence, the drafts person, and I was working with him to review that plan and having him sign it while towards the end. And, and then, you know, so up into the end, he was still working with me until the town called him. And I, I don't understand, you know, what happened.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Lou, but we still don't have enough voting members that would vote in favor of you being able to apply back to the the zoning board of appeals.
I understand. Yeah, I get it. I had to try this and, you know, I can wait two more years, you know, you mean, four years for a lifetime dream, I can wait.
Well, I appreciate your patience. And I know does the date start from June 10th?
Yeah, pretty much the date of that last hearing where they made that decision.
Right. I think it was June 10th.
Yep. So another year and a half, whatever.
Right.
I'll get there.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming to our board to review. Thanks.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yep. If you could stop sharing your screen, thanks. Thank you. Next item on tonight's agenda, action item, set dates for December 2020 and January 2021. Just from feedback from the board, it's, we're going to, and we're going to keep to the December dates for the second and fourth and January for the second and fourth. We've already set the first January meeting. Does anybody have any comments or issues with meeting on December 22nd, which is the Tuesday before of Christmas week? And I haven't looked to see when Hanukkah or other holidays fall.
Nope.
I'm unsure if I'll be able to make the meeting on the 22nd.
The 22nd, okay. All right.
I, I think we should see what, what our agenda looks like at our next meeting.
Okay.
But I think it's better that we stick to our schedule. So if people are planning things, they know when we're going to be meeting, but I don't know, you know, if we don't, we may have nothing on the agenda for them anyways, or it might be late. So.
I agree. And you know, just for the new board members, for Joanne and Megan, this is a lot of planning board meetings in the last month and a half or so. What does usually happen in my experience and Matt and Bill can jump in around the holidays, it becomes more difficult. And then we have, who knows what happens in the wintertime with Zoom meetings continuing. And in the spring, we shouldn't have any issue with snow or icy roads, but we might have an issue with power. So we'll take each of those dates as it happens and we'll, we'll see how we can do it. But the second and the fourth, so our next planning board meeting would be on December 8th. Is that correct? Okay. And we'll see what the agenda is for the 22nd. And if there's nothing on the agenda, we won't have a meeting. That's happened before, too.
I had a quick question. In terms of reviewing the material before the meeting?
Yes.
I've been pretty good about the reviewing the stuff where you, you know, are pushing it out in an email. But where you have to go to the website and read some things.
Right.
Yeah, that's been a little trickier for me for some reason. I'm not sure why.
Are the links not working or?
Well, I, yeah, the links are, I mean, putting a link in the email, that's probably working. I don't know why I've missed it. It seems like on some of these things.
It might be too. It's, I know we're trying to improve the town website from recommendations and having plans up there. We're, we're trying to keep everything in PDFs. I, I think that's probably the best format for all of us to be able to read everything in. I don't know if any of the documents were not in PDF and that became an issue as well.
So are you saying that the, the links have been direct to the materials on the website?
Correct. If if I go to, let's see. So can you see the Wakefield Planning Board website?
Yep.
All right. So the videos are just going to play on YouTube and they're just through WCAT, they're connected. But the planning board links here on the agenda should be PDFs when they come up through here. And then these plans here, the preliminary plans should also come up as PDFs. When they come up as PDFs, what I do is I go to the little arrow, the download arrow, and then I usually save it local. So I have the information here.
Okay, all right, I see it now. So I should be reviewing the preliminary plans.
Well, that definitely, and that's something that was sent to us back in September, end of September, I believe, early October. Well, I was. A R's and the plans came on one, a couple of messages.
So can anybody see that or is it just us who?
Oh, anybody can see them. This is something new and it's something Matt's been trying to push for a while now. But I think now working with Jennifer McDonald, Susan and I were just figuring out, it's like, how do we get the agendas up there? How do we get the meeting minutes up there? How do we get the plans up there? So I think we have, Susan, I think we have a pretty good system now that it's, it's going to work. It's just in PDF format. What do we want to say? There's no.
Right there on the front page.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Good comment. Good question. Thanks. Oh, opener on one. So meeting minutes, any items not anticipated? I don't have any this evening.
Well, I, I do like that we now have a way to put plans up on, on the website. What's our protocol for doing that?
You know, Jennifer asked that as well, and, and Susan asked it, like, how, how do we know which ones are the latest ones to go up? Like, if we have an update or a revision, we can post it up there. I think when we're sent these plans from, say if Brian McGrail, Attorney McGrail sends plans for us to review, we usually get them the Wednesday before our meeting. Seems to be like the Tuesday or Wednesday before the meeting, we get these plans. If we take a quick look at them, I'm not so sure, Matt, if the right process is to send those plans right away up to the website.
Or wait a day because Brian sometimes updates them?
Well, wait a day because it's also something that we take a look at. And I know Matt, I go on the Registry of Deeds and look and I, we have a checklist that we can run down to make sure the right information. I mean, this is for the A and R plans.
Well, I would suggest that we only put plans up there that are received at a planning board meeting. And the reason why we do that, if someone submits a plan, if someone emails us a plan and we need to accept it at our next meeting and it gets posted on our website and for some reason we don't have a meeting or something, I don't want someone going back and saying, well, I sent it to, to the board. They posted on their website. That's deemed acceptance and the clock starts running. So only plans should be, that should be put up there are, once we're, they're accepted at a meeting and we're moving forward with it, then we put the plans up there. And then we let people know that their plans are there. Just because someone sends us a plan, we should not be just automatically uploading it. So.
On the flip side of that, is it, if we are reviewing a set of drawings at a future planning board meeting, shouldn't we have those plans on the website? So people who are attending the meeting get a chance to look at them?
So you're saying if we get revised, so we've, you say if we've already accepted a subdivision plan, we're currently reviewing it and we get updated plans?
Right.
That's different. That we should put up there, but we should put them up there with the old plans also. So someone should be able to see.
Yep.
You know, first revision, you know, the initial submission, first revision, second revision.
I like that, Matt. That's, that's where I was going with my question. I was going to follow it up. It's like, what if we get a couple of different revisions so we can go back and see it? So if we have, say, as we go forward with 50 Quanapawit Parkway, and there's three different versions of that definitive subdivision plan that we can have them, I would suggest that it has the date with our one, our two, our three or something as a suffix. Does that work?
Works for me. I don't know how the website's going to handle that, but.
Well, we can, we can just ask to see if that's how it can work. Any Megan, Joanne or Bill, do you have any comments regarding how the plans are posted to the website regarding revisions and dates?
It's fine to me.
Right.
I mean, I think in terms of version control, you know, that's, that's always a challenge. As long as it's really obvious what version it is and they're in order.
Yeah, the taxonomy side of it's important. I think it should start with the name. So it keeps the same name, whether it's the, for example, 107 Prospect Street should be the first part. And then as a suffix, it would have the date or revision one, revision two, revision three. I think, I think we can work that out. And I can ask Jen McDonald what she does for other boards or if this is something she's done before to see if she already has something in place.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's tools to do that, you know, but they're probably sophisticated, I'm sure.
And, and there may be some plans that don't go up there, too. If it's an A and R plan, that's not really, you know, up for public debate. It's a statutory thing. And if, you know, if we accept them, they'll be on public record at the Registry of Deeds. So I think we just be careful of what we throw up there, too. We just don't put everything, every plan that we receive goes up there.
No, Matt, that's a good point. I'm thinking preliminary subdivision plans, definitive subdivision plans. And I would, I can't think of other plans that we would have up there.
Maybe a working zoning map plan, something like that. If we're an overlay district, something like that. If, if we, if we have plans that we're working on something.
Okay.
We would definitely want to put that up there so we can get public input.
Okay. And that would be something, I mean, that would definitely be a special type plan that would be up there. And we want to see how that connects back to the zoning resources, too. Do we have it in both places or does it just link back? Okay.
Well, if it's something we're working on, a review of a zoning change or something.
Right.
You know, people are going to come to us because we're the ones reviewing it at that point. Zoning, you know, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be posted at zoning anywhere because it's, it hasn't been enacted upon yet.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure information's up there so we can direct the public to, to, to go find it or they can look on their own and see that things are there.
Right. I think we should also have a link from our page to the zoning by law page. They just links to the same place. All right. Thanks for your input, Matt. It's helpful. Any other items not anticipated on our agenda?
So we had talked about the, the planning board email account. How, I know you've been, you've been seeing that, but the rest of us haven't. So like with this zoning change, I know a lot of emails were sent, but no one really got to see any of those or review them. So what's, you know, what's the status of that?
Well, I haven't been able to get into the planning board email this evening, which is frustrating. The way the planning board email is set up, it goes to, it's from the town website. If you click on planning board, Wakefield Planning Board, it goes to an Outlook email account and I have access to get into that as the chair. We can give access to each, each person. I approached, I sent an email to see, should we each have our own town email address? Meaning, would it be like mLowry@ Wakefield, you know, Planning Board? I didn't receive a, an answer on it. So I, I haven't followed up on it. The information that does come in, when we first started this whole Friends of Lake Quanapawit, there were 54 emails that came in in like two days and a bunch of other ones, too, for people that were asking for the planning board to please have a public hearing, special meeting before town meeting to, they were, they were more of a forum letter. they were, they were more of a forum letter. The other emails that come in, a lot of it is cross emails from the Conservation Commission and other emails that are sent out to just all the boards. The information that does come in that pertains to topics that we're discussing, those are the emails that I do copy and paste and send to all members. Like, for example, the information that came in for Zero Cherry Lane and the information that came in from Town Council regarding the articles for Friends of Lake Quanapawat proposed. And so, Matt, I just wanted to give a quick summary, what comes in, not in the defensive side, but just to inform what's there. As a board, do we all want access to that? I think that would be fine. I think we would have to set up some rules, Matt, that not board members just don't reply to emails that come in.
Well, the reason why I bring this up is because it was presented to us in discussions with the zoning is that things were sent to the board and you, you know, we all saw it, which was not correct. So just like if something is sent to the town clerk, like this petition, well, you got it because you're the town. And, well, I don't want someone to say, well, I sent, I sent you an email and they sent it to the planning board and expect that we're all going to see it and have that come up again. So I'm just trying to head off that issue before it's another issue again.
Right.
Just because something submitted to the town clerk doesn't mean that every employee in Wakefield or everyone associated with Wakefield has received it. So, and I tried to get a copy of that and, you know, I still, even the person who had the petition couldn't get a copy to me. So.
I haven't seen it either.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good point. So maybe just thinking, working, thinking out loud, setting up a, and Matt, I might have talked to you about this. If I set up a rule in Outlook that anything that comes in as addressed to the planning board, it automatically forwards the message to each of the email addresses that we have on record for board members. There might be a lot of junk email coming in, but you can also organize that in your own folders in your personal email. So if there are two different solutions for this, one is each of us has Wakefield Planning Board email created for us through the town. The other solution could be in the planning board, board email that exists now, how do we set up a rule in Outlook that when an email comes in, it automatically forwards it to the five of us?
I mean, that's, that's an option. I personally, you know, I get enough emails. And one of the issues with with having, and we're in that position now where we get we get bored emails if something if there was an action taken on on a certain issue that came up and our emails all got subpoenaed, they're going to look through all of our personal emails, trying to find any, any discussion on whatever we had that if we were communicating about anything.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't necessarily want a public email address that purports to go to the entire planning board or the planning board and then get disseminated to all of our personal emails and then that potentially ties them all together. So I think the solution is either we get some type of place where we can, we can view these and not have them directly emailed to ourselves, or maybe we need to shut that that email down and not and not have someone believe that if they send an email to that, they're sending it to the planning board. You know, if you want to have it chairman of the planning board or something like that, then you know, then someone who's sending an email knows it's not going to the entire planning board. I want to get away from someone believing that they are communicating with the entire board.
Understood. And here's, here's where it is on the page, by the way. If you could see that, I'm sharing that and it's right here, planning board, Wakefield, Mass. When you click on that, it will open up Outlook, Outlook and send it right to the email account I can't get into tonight. Maybe there's just, I don't know if you can see my screen right now, but I'm on Outlook web. There's the sign in and I just keep getting bad requests.
So if that said, you know, contact the chairman of the board or something like that, that may rectify this instead of someone believing they're communicating with the entire planning board.
It's a good point, Matt. And I know other Wakefield boards just to look at. Let's see. I'm just opening the Board of Appeals. I know Town Council, they all have their own emails. That's different. Town Council, CIL. So you can email Gail. Susan will just have an email for you and all the emails will go to you. And then you can see these other ones are not emails at all. So there is one, contact the Board of Appeals. So this must be the same way. I shouldn't assume, but does it just go to David Hatfield? Or does he have access to the whole board? Let me do some investigating, Matt. Because the ZBA has one as well.
Well, like I said, I didn't even, I've been on the board for years. I didn't know we had a planning board email and
Yeah, I didn't either.
Oh, it's it's one of those things. If we've, if we've been getting emails for years, I have to apologize for not responding because I didn't.
I agree. So, yeah, I think I don't know if a former town planner, Paul Reviss, replied to those emails or took them in or responded in other ways. But or if it, maybe it didn't exist in the old website anyway. Maybe this is just something new with the refresh of the website. This has changed in the last week as well. So it's being updated.
The Newtown Planner, Economic Developer, started Monday.
Yep, Erin Kokinda, she was actually in attendance in our meeting this evening.
Oh.
And I did get an email from her that she wants to connect. And I connected with her on LinkedIn the night after the Town Council meeting, just to introduce myself and connect and see if there was anything that she wanted to discuss. And that was a few weeks ago, but now I believe this week is her first week.
Yesterday.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's Tuesday. It's only Tuesday. All right. Well, I appreciate all the time and effort going in and Matt, it's, it's good to hear your concerns about this. It's I'll investigate to find out about the emails and I'll start with talking to Erin about it to see what she thinks, how it should be, if she is going to take on the role of partial town planner as well as economic, community, economic developer director. Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Yeah, I see. I'm going through other boards and they all seem to have this, too. I don't know how other boards respond to this, if they respond, if they even know it exists also.
Yeah.
It seems to be, it was set up with really no protocols
No.
in place, so.
I wasn't aware of it. And I think this is new in the last year and a half that this email showed up. I'll ask David Hatfield how they treat theirs with the ZBA as well. Any other comments from the board? Questions? Lot to learn. Tonight, there was three or four things that, to me, that were very unique as well, especially with the one subdivision with two different certities for that property.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn since it's way past my bedtime.
It's 10 o'clock. Yeah. Megan's second. All in favor? Thank you all. Thank you, Susan.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too. Good night.
Susan.